Good evening. The regular meeting-
Buenas noches. Esta sesión de trabajo.
The Board of Trustees for the Spring Independent School District is officially called the Board on January tenth, twenty twenty-three, and the time is now seven oh two P M. Board of Trustees President, our trustee Adams, trustee Correa, trustee Hodges, trustee Durant, trustee Jensen, and trustee Newhouse. I would like to ask everyone to turn off or silence your cellphones or any electronic devices. At this time, I would like to ask our trustee Adams, our vice president, to begin the meeting and chair of our Equity Committee by reading our equity statement.
Thank you, Madam President. Spring Independent School District strongly believes in educational and racial equity as fundamental aspects of its core mission and purpose, embodied through any program, practice, decision, or action that affects all students with a strategic focus on those choices and policies that most strongly impact marginalized students. We believe all students, regardless of their ability, ethnicity, language, race, religion, gender identity, and status, should have equitable access to opportunities, resources, support systems, and educational rigor in order to maximize their academic success and social emotional well-being. We believe every Spring Independent School District student is valuable and possesses individual strengths and characteristics that make our district a great place to learn and grow. Moreover, we seek to act on that belief, instituting policies and practices that value diversity, committing ourselves as a district to continued growth and development, and working to support the success of every student in all that we do.
Thank you, trustee Adam. Tonight's presentation of colors will be led by our Spring Leadership Academy Color Guard. The pledges will be led by the L R O T C Color Guard member cadet Zion Williams. The Color Guard member carrying the U S flag is Bravo Plateau leader Cadet Camelia Dejoyes. Carrying the Texas flag is Cadet Sidney Reiner. Left rifle is Cadet Isaac Garcia, and right rifle is Cadet Daniel Torres. The Spring Leadership Academy Color Guard instructors are Roy Simpson and Dante Ricardo. At this time, will everyone please stand?
Mark time. March. Colors change. March. Present. Arms.
And now please join us in the recital of the pledge allegiance to the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Port. Arms. Color guard. Post. Colors change. March.
You can remain standing. Great job. This time, I'd ask that everyone present, please quietly observe a moment of silence in your own way. Thank you. You may be seated. Our next item is a presentation of proclamation and recognition for Board Appreciation Month. And at this time, I'd like to recognize our general counsel, Jeremy Binkley.
Thank you, Madam President. Board of Trustees, I'm honored tonight to present to you two proclamations. The first is from Governor Greg Abbott. Governor Greg Abbott proclaims January twenty twenty-three to be School Board Recognition Month and encourages all Texans to acknowledge and celebrate the thousands of school board trustees who voluntarily serve the next generation of leaders, and in doing so, who pave the way for a better, brighter future for the Lone Star State. Our second proclamation tonight is from Judge Lena Hidalgo. Judge Hidalgo proclaims January twenty twenty-three as School Board Appreciation Month and urges all citizens to recognize the dedication and hard work of local school board members who mold an education system that meets the needs of both today and tomorrow's children. From the administration, we thank you, trustees, for all you do for Spring ISD, for our students, for our staff, and for ensuring that our students receive the best education possible. With that, we actually have a video that we would like to present tonight, and I'm going to ask Mike to cue that up.
Hello. My name is Carlos, and I'm a student here at Spring ISD. The people here at my school are working all the time to teach me and my friends, and I think they do a pretty good job. But there is another group of people who work hard for our education. That's the Spring ISD School Board. Now, there's only seven of them, but they provide the leadership for our whole district. That's over five thousand staff members and a whole lot of students like me. That sounds like a lot of work, important work, but did you know that school board members aren't paid? They actually volunteer their time to keep Spring ISD moving forward. That's why this whole month is dedicated to recognizing school boards all across the state. Well, I don't know much about those other school boards, but I'm pretty thankful for our board members here in Spring. They know that in a diverse district like ours, students can have different needs, and sometimes there can be learning gaps. Our board makes sure that all of their decisions result in meeting the needs of all of us students. You know how we always say, "Believe in Spring"? Well, these board members really do believe in us, and other people are believing in Spring too. The state of Texas has told us that our district has improved to a B rating for the first time since 2013. I wasn't even in school then. They also work with people and committees in our state government to advocate for us. The state Capitol is a big place, but they know their way around. These board members still find plenty to do closer to home, too. In addition to the many meetings they have, they're always encouraging and applauding our students and staff for achieving success. Speaking of success, how about that 2022 bond that was just approved by the voters? These people were the ones who unanimously agreed to send the $850 million referendum to the voters that will keep Spring moving forward and benefiting every student and teacher in our district. So you see, these seven people do a lot for us all year long, and this month, we just wanted to say thank you to them. At Spring ISD, we're moving forward together.
I'd like to say thank you, and I'd also like to recognize Principal Bronzy, whose Carlos is on her campus, and he's just an amazing kid. I don't know if he's here tonight, but we'll recognize you and say thank you, great work. At this time, I'd like to recognize our chief of academics. Chief Quayle.
Good evening, trustees, and again, Happy Board Appreciation Month. As we continue the recognitions, I'm excited and very proud, Chief of Academics, to have an incredible group of students that are joining us today to continue the recognitions to the incredible trustees that we have before us. I want to go ahead and call up Dr. Edwards, who is here, who is going to introduce our students from our Victory Program within the Special Services Department.
Good evening.
Good evening.
To thank you so much for allowing us an opportunity to come and speak before you and present a token of appreciation to you, President Durant, to all of the Board of Trustees, and to our super proud superintendent, Dr. Hinojosa. I'm going to ask our teacher for our Victory Program, which is our eighteen-plus program, to come up, and she's going to briefly share some information, and then share opportunities for three of our students who participate in the Victory Program to share appreciation towards you all as well.
Good evening, President Durant, school board members, trustees, and Dr. Hinojosa. I am Talita Davis. I am an eighteen-plus Victory teacher. Victory is here to help our students with college and career readiness. It stands for Vocational Independence Community Training of our outstanding, resilient young adults. The Victory Program has many enterprises, and they did utilize one of the enterprises, our print shop, to create the gifts presented here today. I would like to introduce our first Victory spokesperson, Raul Fernandez.
My name is Raul Fernandez, and I've been working at a Victory Cafe.
Marjorie Amaya.
My name is Marjorie Amaya, and I painted one project.
Hi, Devon McPherson.
I am Devon McPherson, and I use a cricket machine to create many products, like the gifts we have made for you. No matter what, the great students of Victory will always be victorious. Happy Board Appreciation Month. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So all of the items that are in the bags were created by our students in the Victory Program. They use items like t-shirt presses. They made the Yeti cups for you guys. They're all personalized. Your sizes are in there. We got that information from Jason. Thank you so much, and happy Board Appreciation.
Thank you so much, and thank you, Fernandez, Marjorie, and Devon. We always love it when we have an opportunity to interact with our students. So thank you so much for our gifts and for being here. Guys, it smells good. Something in here smells really good. Our next item is our superintendent remarks, and so now I'd like to recognize our super and proud superintendent, who brings joy, Dr. Lapita Hinojosa.
Thank you so much, and I know our students are walking out, but definitely, you know, we talked about service, and you all talked about how it was so easy to be here in Spring, and this is why, you know, I say every day that I'm the super proud superintendent. When you see students like this make products such as this, and I know our board members, you can see, they're super proud with everything that we've received from our students in the Victory Program located just right down the street, really, at Westfield High School. So thank you so very much. And definitely, it's been an amazing start of school. This is like our second week bag, but really not, because we were only here two days on Friday last week, and then we got started this week. And so just grateful to be able to come back, to be with our students. And I know on Thursday, I shared and I encouraged everyone, you know, to go out to social media and see all the great learning, all the great pictures that have been happening, and so want to tease you a little bit. This week, or just was it today? It was just today? Well, I've been to Burchett twice already, but Burchett, and they're here. They're here. I didn't even see you all back there, but I was definitely going to highlight Ms. Lawson's tweet, as I encourage, you know, everyone that's watching us tonight, everyone that's here, you know, go to Twitter, and you will learn so many great things that are happening here at Spring. And so Ms. Lawson, the literacy geek, all right, she says, "Today was our first day back in Spring ISD, and this scholar hugged me super tight today." I'm always reminded of why I teach. We definitely tap into the social emotional learning today. And then she posted the little note that the student gave her as he came in and wanted to let her know how special and how much he said, you know, he really appreciated her. And one little quote in there says, "If they gave me to, if I had to choose between $10,000 or Ms. Lawson," he said, "I would definite, I would take Ms. Lawson because I love her deeply." Like, it feels like my mother, almost, she's been the most, the best reading teacher ever. Although we have our differences, I still accept her. I thank Ms. Lawson for being in my life. And so that's why we do what we do. Our, well, I don't know that Ms. Lawson's here, but I know all the Burchett teachers that are here, we all stand up and represent Burchett. I know our principal was here earlier. What grade? She's his fourth grade, and I don't know, since she's the literacy teacher or M C L. Right, so I'm not sure what grade level the student- There you go. And she says, "My favorite teacher in this school is Ms. Lawson." And, you know, when we talk about we had an amazing return, you know, back to school, our teachers, our educators, principals, counselors, very excited to get back, just because we love what we do, but it's because of our students. And, you know, our board today earlier talked about what, why they did what they do, and it's about our students. So definitely encourage you to go out to Twitter, look up, definitely follow, tag Ms. Lawson, but our Burchett staff, but all of our staff. Definitely, an amazing Spring is, you know, on an amazing trajectory, and we heard that today. You heard Ms. Thomas talk about the O C, which is the Opportunity Culture Project that this board approved last year, and we're actually implementing. And so I had the amazing opportunity to visit Spring Leadership Academy. It's a middle school program, and you saw their L O T C program here today. Roberson Middle School, and you see Ms. Bronzy is here. We also visited Reynolds Elementary, Jenkins, and Burchett. And I can tell you, you know, my heart was full. And you ask why? It's our students and their excitement. The students' love of learning, and really, it's because our teachers' love of teaching. And so just excited, and, you know, we're ready for the final stretch. This is, as I've been talking to staffs, I was at Bailey and Burchett faculty meeting, and we talked about this is the last half of the game. We're on the final stretch, and we accept the challenge. Also, you know, earlier, you heard Mr. Binkley read the resolutions. You saw our Victory Program come and, you know, appreciate our board. This is Board Appreciation Month, and so taking the opportunity to really celebrate our board, because we do believe we've got the best board in Texas. I have to say that. And as I go to conferences with this board, I have to tell you, yeah, we do have the best board in Texas. And, you know, to all of you that are out in the audience or watching us, this group of team of seven, team of eight, they work tirelessly to ensure that we are prepared and giving our students the best education possible. And, you know, I said this earlier to the folks that came in, to our administrators, and I want to say it to the audience, you see them, you know, every month, minimum of two, two meetings, but they're working behind the scenes, and I keep using the word "work." However, they don't get paid. They volunteer. They serve this community, and so just grateful that they have chosen to take this on, to take and live this, this life of service. And as the administration, all of us that are here today, we want to take the time to acknowledge your time, your dedication, your commitment to service, but most importantly, your commitment to serving our children, our district, and our community. And so we're asking all of you out there to make sure, and like I said, go to Twitter, but join us, join us in getting the word out there and showing your appreciation for our board. And so our hashtag is #ThanksSpringISD, all capital letters, #board. So get out there, especially our teachers and our administrators that are here. Also, just a little tidbit, our invitations just went out to our State of the District Breakfast. This is our first time coming back since 2020. Back in February of 2020 was the last time we held our State of the District, and then COVID hit, so we haven't gotten together. And this is an opportunity for our community to come in and learn more about what we are doing in Spring ISD. And this year, it will be a ticketed event, $40, which is not much. What we are doing is fundraising, fundraising for our students. You see the amazing work that they're doing, and we want to give them more opportunities to earn scholarships. So $40 per ticket, and then, of course, if you want to buy a whole table, we definitely want to be able to do that. So if you haven't gotten your invitation, they're coming out this week. In the meantime, you can definitely go to our website, www.springisd.org slash, and it's S O T D, all right, S O T D. Look us up, and we want to continue to share the great things that we are doing in the district and really showcase our students and our district, and definitely thank our families. One other important note, while we're celebrating our board members in January, it's also National Mentoring Month. And so just as a quick reminder, you know, we know that mentors, even just one, can make a huge difference in the life of our children, of our students. And so Spring ISD, and many of you may know, but may not know, that we have a program called Vine Mentoring Program. And actually, Ms. McDaniel, that's not here tonight, she's one of our mentors out at Anderson Elementary. And so this mentoring program helps you connect you with students, and it's very simple, very, very simple. It's more about talking to students. It's more about listening to them. It's more about making that relationship. And so this is an opportunity for you to make an impact, a positive impact in our students' lives. And so really, go to our website, volunteer, become a mentor, but really, this month, we want to celebrate our mentors and the power of that supportive, meaningful mentor relationship. So we will be hosting a mentee and parent dinner on Thursday, January nineteenth, and I know Ms. Trinita Carroll is here. This Vine Mentoring Program is under our Family and Community Engagement Department, so look forward to hearing from us a lot more on the positive impact that mentors are having in our students' lives. There she is. I know they probably called her and said, "Where are you, Ms. Carroll?" But definitely go to our website and look us up and become a mentor. And then last but not least, I know we've been getting emails, all of our applications for our school choice, it closed on Friday. Okay, so that's over. Families, parents, you're going to be getting notices about if you need any pieces of your application, but the next major date, we want you to keep an eye on and keep checking your emails, is February twenty-fourth. That's when we will be sending out the notices, your acceptance notices. They'll be doing interviews, they'll be hosting the lotteries, and so look for communication from us on February twenty-fourth. That's when you will have the opportunity to know and receive that notification. And so parents, you know, you'll get the notice, but we do have a time limit for you to let us know if you accept the invitation to come to one of our schools, and that deadline is March tenth. So we're going to, we're going to really push you, because if you are not coming, we're giving that seat to another student. So thank you to all of our staff. I know we recognized Dr. Tingle that's here. He coordinates our school choice program here in the district, and we're excited to have that already underway. And so lots of great things happening in Spring. Please visit our website, follow us on Twitter, Facebook, Instagram, whatever social media is out there, we're there just to learn more about us. And so to close this out, thank you once again to our board for their dedication and their support of Spring ISD. And that concludes my announcements and comments.
Thank you, Dr. Hinojosa. Our next item, I would like to give the other trustees an opportunity to make some remarks, but I did receive a text message from trustee McDaniel's, and she, she wanted to let everyone know that she, sorry she couldn't be here, she's home with COVID, but she's watching online, so she is online, and she said she absolutely loved the video, so.
Yes.
So everybody wave at trustee McDaniel's. Get welcome. So I'd like to now open up the floor for my colleagues for any remarks.
I would like to give thanks to a group of incredibly important people, to the health and safety and beauty of our schools, and that's the custodians. When we came back to school, it was before the students were back in school, but we were able to serve a luncheon to the custodians. And like I say, when I go into a school and I'm visiting the school, our schools look bright and spill clean. I thank the people who keep them that way.
So earlier today, the Texas Legislature convened for its eighty-eighth regular session, managed to elect a speaker in the first ballot. So I want to encourage everybody to engage this biennium in the legislative process as much as you possibly can. There's some challenges we have in terms of the budget, and so what is really powerful to our legislators in Austin is when we show up. Later this month, I believe a bunch of us are going to DC to advocate on behalf of public schools, and there's an opportunity coming up next month to go to Austin to advocate for public schools in general. And so I just want to make sure that everybody's aware that that is happening now, and to engage, the last day of the session is May twenty-ninth, so you have several months. If you have the opportunity to be in Austin, to go up to the Capitol and speak to our legislators on behalf of the schoolchildren.
I know this is Board Appreciation Month, but I would also like to take the time to thank you for the recognition that we have received for Board Appreciation Month. It is a joy, a pleasure, and my passion to serve for Spring ISD students. As you know, I'm a former educator after thirty-four years in education, and I can't stop giving and loving my students. So thank you. And my thanks goes out especially to our teachers, principals, assistant principals, staff. We could not do this if it wasn't- We could not do this if it wasn't for your work that you do. It gives me pleasure to talk about spring when I am away from my district because of what you do. You make it easy for us. So the thanks and the appreciation, I don't feel goes to me. It goes to you for the work that you do for our students. So thank you, and God bless each of you.
And I ditto the sentiments of my colleagues on the board. And as a former student of Trustee Rhonda Newhouse, it is my pleasure to sit and to serve with her. I'm always just amazed that I'm sitting here next to Ms. Newhouse. So I want to thank all of you in the district, the community, everyone, for your support as a board, as a body of eight. We couldn't do what we're charged with doing without your support. And just as Trustee Adams mentioned, we want to encourage you to take it a step further. Let's advocate for our students, advocate for our community by being engaged in what's going on in Austin. Every time we're in session, you know, the legislature, there are a lot of things that's going on, and we really need to be knowledgeable and be informed and be informed voters as well. So I encourage you to go to the State of Texas website, look at the bills that are being passed or that are up, and especially those that are, that deal with the school system, because they're very important. And we will be advocating as well for, on behalf of Spring ISD. So we encourage you to do the same. And thank you all so much for your support. And thank you for recognizing what we do as school board members. Thank you.
I just also want to say thank you. We know it's Board Appreciation Month, but we do it because we love it. And we care about our kids, we care about our students. And I take this role very seriously, because I have been elected by my community to represent you and make sure that we are advocating for your kids. And I'm honored to work with a body, my colleagues, who put kids first in every decision we make. And all boards don't do that, you know, but your board does in Spring ISD. A lot of my colleagues have also mentioned the opening of recent legislative session. Public education is under attack. And it's really important that we speak up and let our voices be heard. I'm happy to see parents here tonight with their students. But even if you can't get to Austin, send an email to your representatives and let them know, you know, what you feel and how important it is that they continue to fund and support your students and our kids. And another thing I wanted to talk about is, we work really hard together. We spent all day together Saturday from nine to four in a board workshop where we did a self-evaluation, where we evaluated ourselves, and it compared us to how well we're advocating for you and how we're managing the budget appropriately. And so we spent a lot of time, you know, making sure that we meet the expectations that we want in serving our community. And I just want to thank my board members for all of their support and their commitment, and let them know that I appreciate them. So thank you, guys. And with that said, we will now continue with tonight's agenda. And so our next item is our spotlight, which is one of my favorite portions of the meeting. So at this time, I'm going to ask the board and Dr. Hannah Holzer to join us in the horseshoe.
So this is the best time, as we get to spotlight our incredible students. So I'm going to go ahead and ask for Dr. Clark to come up to the front, who's going to give a little background on the Spring High School Clarinet Quartet UIL Award presentation. Dr. Clark?
Thank you, thank you, and happy Board Appreciation. Madam President, very good to see you. And we have a very, very special guest. If I can take a quick second, though, too. I know you guys get a lot of thank yous, but to be one specific, I want to tell you. And all the events are Cho's performances, K through 12. The thing that has impressed me the most across the board is you guys always lean in when you talk to the students. And you never hurry, you never rush. You are truly authentic and engaged every single time I see you interact, and you're very, very sincere. And so that's my appreciation to you guys. We do have an incredible guest here with us that's going to join us, and I'm going to let him do some of the introductions. Some of you guys may recognize him, the Assistant Director for Music for UIL. Get yourself.
Dr. Hannah Holzer and board members, it's truly a special honor to be here tonight. I taught here for 18 years, my wife still teaches here. My son came through the spring program, has a master's degree in geographic information systems, and I am very indebted to the education he received here in the spring ISD. So I bleed spring, even though I work for the state. I want to give you a little background. This is a brand-new event at the UIL. It's the UIL State Instrumental Chamber Music Competition. And I've been at UIL now for five years. But this event is something I've been thinking about for a long time. And one of the reasons was, one of my incredible assistants that I got to work with at Spring High School developed a chamber program that was nationally recognized several times over. And the cool thing about it was, I got to work with him for a while. He was also a Spring High School product. And it's always great when you get to work with your ex-students. And if you're in this business long enough, it'll happen, right? So I want to go ahead and bring up one of my favorite students of all time, and the current director of bands at Spring High School, along with Reina and Zenaya. A few guys have come on up, Jason Smith, Director of Bands at Spring. And it gives me great pleasure, on behalf of Dr. Brad Kent, UIL State Director of Music, and my colleague Rebecca Kins, to give this inaugural bronze medal trophy to Spring High School Clarinet Quartet.
An inaugural bronze medal. I'm so very proud of you ladies. So nice, and did everybody get a chance to look at this? We continue to be extremely proud of our PBA program and all the local, state, and even national recognitions that you guys continue to receive. And so we're very, very proud of you. Are you having a family here tonight you want to recognize?
It's my parents and my sister.
And the rest of the board would like an opportunity to, did you have something?
I am so sorry, we have one more student. So we have two graduates who are now in college. We have one joining us online.
Wow.
Brian, I believe, and Brian's mom is here, too.
Okay, where's Brian? Hi, Brian.
And Brian's mom is at the general Zoom, too. Brian's mom's there, too.
Hi, Brian's mom. Well, we just wanted to say.
Peabody Institute, John Hopkins.
John Hopkins. Well, you continue to make us proud for Spring ISD. Thank you so much, and congratulations. And I know the rest of the board would like an opportunity to congratulate you as well. So if you could go around and hold on to that for you. Go ahead, get some more information.
Absolutely, and just a little bit more information, too, for you guys. Brian online did get a full ride scholarship on clarinet to his college. And yeah, so all of the things you have learned in spring stick over there, too. So very, very proud of you, too, Brian.
Full ride to John Hopkins.
That's right. Congratulations.
Okay, so how does that go? This young lady's father went to school with Trustee Hodger and is a former student of Trustee Newhouse.
Okay, on to our next recognitions. We're going to be calling up Kevin Holiday, as well as Jessica Jackson from the Instructional Technology Team, who are going to be presenting three awards for students for the Chill Out and Read Initiative. That's going to be recognizing students who have gone above and beyond for reading minutes throughout the holiday. So with that being said, Mr. Holiday and Ms. Jackson.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you all so much for the opportunity to be able to recognize the great work of our students. My name is Kevin Holiday, I'm the Director of Instructional Technology, and I have with me Mrs.
Jessica Jackson, I am the District Instructional Technology Specialist.
And we are two of three of the amazing Instructional Technology Team, and I am proud to be a part of that particular team. First, I'd like to extend a special thanks to each and every board member and cabinet member for supporting all initiatives that lead to the success of our students. So we really appreciate that. Beyond that, we appreciate you making it a priority by recognizing our students. So just wanted to say thank you for that. Also, I want to take this time to thank all of our school communities that are here. I know there are campus leaders behind me. I did see them earlier when they came in, and I can feel their presence here also. And a special thanks to all the teachers, as well as the library media specialist, staff members, all of those that are just the ground soldiers in making this work possible. Last but not least, I want to thank Ms. Robin Carrier and Ms. Kelly Anderson for starting this tradition, and we're honored to keep this tradition moving. Now, the Chill Out and Read Program, again, is a program that we have in place to support motivating our students to read more during the holiday time. And so we're excited to spotlight six campuses, three elementary school campuses and three middle school campuses, as well as two students that just simply crushed it over the holidays. So I'm going to step aside and let Ms. Jessica Jackson introduce our six schools, and I have the privilege of introducing our two students.
So we're going to announce these schools, and we would like to ask all the representatives to stand up, and that's for us to clap for them. But I wanted to let you know how the tradition works. Once we announce them and they come up and get recognized here, this week, we will take the banners from the old winners. We will steal them from them and bring them to the new champions. They'll get to hang those up and sign and brag on Twitter. So we're very excited about that part, and I just want to let you guys know about that. So without further ado, I'd like to announce the elementary winners, our top three. In third place, we have Heritage Elementary, please stand. In second place, we have Cooper Elementary, please stand. Our first-place district champion-winning campus is Benneke Elementary. And now for our middle school campuses. For third place, we have Do-It Middle School, please stand. For second place, we have Leadership Academy, please stand. Number-one champion for middle school, the winning campus is Roberson Middle School.
All right, thank you very much, campuses, for all of your hard work. So our two winners, our first winner is from Benneke Elementary School, fifth grader, who read 5,678 minutes, and his name is Oscar Assuma.
Congratulations. Congratulations, well, your heads are full, so we're very, very proud of you. What was your favorite book?
A North West book.
A North West book.
A North West.
Oh, wonderful. That's a lot of reading. My grandmother always said, "Reading was the key to knowledge." And so I'm really excited about how reading that began, especially during the time when you were supposed to be on break.
Yes, so our second winner is a seventh grader from Roberson Elementary, who clocked, Roberson Middle School, my apologies. It's reading sideways, I did. Who clocked 8,788 minutes. And that student is Gustavo Rodriguez.
Congratulations, Gustavo. We're also very proud of you and I, we love your outfit. Any grandparents you want to recognize? Your moms and dads are dust muggles. Well, we're extremely proud of you, and congratulations. Eight thousand, over 8,000 and over 5,000 minutes, that's amazing. The rest of the board would love an opportunity to greet you. So if you want to go around and shake hands with the rest of the board. I don't know if they can shake hands with their hands full. This one, right? One of our key strategic priorities is literacy, you know? And it's really awesome to be able to celebrate these students here this evening. Is that your sister? Don't worry, we're going to get a program.
I think we're okay, yeah. There you go. Here we go, guys, right here, very nice, nice smiles. Hang on. Just a couple more, here we go.
Well, this is very exciting. We have another 15 students that we will be recognizing tonight. So we're going to be spotlighting 15 students for the I Am Texas Writing Contest. I'm going to call up here our Assistant Superintendent, Ms. Tracy Walker, so that she can give us a brief introduction about the award. And while she's coming up here, I wanted to let you know that the project goal was for the foundation, for the Barbara Bush Foundation, HEB, and Phillips 66, to create a gigantic book as tall as seven feet. And so some of our students were part of this publishing project. So Ms. Tracy Walker?
Thank you. Thank you, President Durant, Board Member Trustees, and our Super proud Superintendent. I am Ms. Walker, the Super proud Assistant Superintendent of High Schools. And I have a friend that wants to join because she's extremely nervous. But you understand why she's here, and she said that she wanted to come with me. So I thought that would be okay. All right, my bucket is full tonight because I get to announce something that is aligned with my passion of writing. As you heard Dr. Perez say, we are very pleased to welcome our winners for this past 15 students representing elementary, middle, and high schools. They were selected by the I Write Literacy Organization in the Bryan Museum in Galveston to have their work published in the new book titled I Am Texas. I'm going to read all of it because it's phenomenal information. The project was sponsored by HEB, Phillips 66, and the Barbara Bush Foundation, among others, and had truly Texas-sized goals. To produce a seven-foot-tall book featuring the writing and artwork of students across Texas, our students were recognized. Thousands of students participated in the contest, and ultimately, 1,000 winners were selected for inclusion of the final published volume. The winning students include our very own winners from Spring ISD, and we are honored at a special I Am Texas book launch. The book will also become a part of New York Times bestselling Ordinary People Change the World series, which also features books about important historical, scientific, and cultural figures. The seven-foot-tall world record-winning copy of I Am Texas made its public debut at this year's HEB Thanksgiving Parade. Future stops include Phillips 66 Headquarters in Houston, the Dallas Historical Society, and the Alamo in San Antonio, as well as the State Capitol. We're very proud of all of our students who too part in this contest. And at this time, I'd like to read their names, their current campus, and share the title of each of their submissions. You ready? Our first student is Malay Balzua, and this is our 11th grader from Carl Wenchey High School. I don't know if she's here today, but if so, please stand. We have Dr. James in the back. Okay, and then we have Latavia Eugene, eighth grade student at Cloughton Middle School. The title of the work is Texas Home of the Best Food. We have Alexia Rodriguez Flores. Thank you, Dr. Amerson. Fourth grade Thompson Elementary School artwork titled The Cactus Family. You want to come on up?
Yeah.
Come on. Another friend. Okay, and then we have Amy Garcia, sixth grade, Twin Creeks Middle School artwork titled Morning Feed. If you're here, please come to the front. And then we have Crystal Extemali. I got it. We practiced in the back. Fifth grade from Donna Lewis Elementary artwork titled Working at Sunrise. Isaac Lewis, class of 2022, Carl Wenchey Senior High School artwork at a maestro's melody. Jeremiah Lenti, a 10th grader at Wenchey High School artwork titled A Sharecropper's Daydreams. Lucas Marquez, a 10th grader at Wenchey High School artwork titled A Bull's Last Tribute. Derwin Martinez, fifth grade at Smith Elementary artwork titled Farm Fun. And we have Jade McKissick, 12th grader at Spring High School, titled S.I. Cruise and Peruse. Astrid Mendioza, sixth grader at Twin Creeks Middle School artwork titled Sunny Bouquet. We have Juan Montez Jr., fifth grader at Meyer Elementary artwork titled The Wild West. We have Madeline Russell, class of 2022 graduate at Wenchey High School artwork titled Music is the Language of the Heart and Soul. Wenchey Omar Tellez, 11th grader at Wenchey High School artwork titled Horsein' Around. Horsein' Around. All right, and last but certainly not least, we have Jackson Tikas, seventh grade at Cloughton Middle School. And these are our 15 students with the amazing recognition for the I Am Texas Award. At this time, I would like to ask President Durant if you have any words that you'd like to share with our. Okay, our Vice President, I'm sorry.
This is amazing. Congratulations to all of you. And we're going to have you go through the four stages.
If you're here, please join us. Dr. James and all principals of our staff.
All right, gentlemen, are we good? Or maybe we squeeze down a little bit?
All right, guys. Right here, guys, very nice, nice smiles, everybody. Hang on. All right, just a couple more. Here we go, nice smiles and... That's it.
So they talk a lot about how we don't get paid monetarily, but that's rewarding to my heart to see the great work and accomplishments of our children. Our next item is agenda participation. This item allows members of the public an opportunity to speak to agenda items before those items are considered by the board. Mr. Binkley, do we have anyone signed up for agenda participation?
Not for agenda participation, no, Madam President.
Our next item is public participation. This portion of the meeting, Mr. Binkley, do we have anyone registered to speak during public participation?
Yes, Madam President, we have two registered speakers tonight. Our first speaker is going to be Donald Davis. And as Mr. Davis makes his way up to the podium, I do have a short piece to read. So the... Sorry, I think I clicked something. "The Board Invites Interested Citizens to Address the Board on Any Subject They Desire Other Than Allegations Concerning the Character or Capability of Any Board Member, Staff Member, Citizen, or Student of the District. The Board Provides an Opportunity on the Agenda for Citizens to Address the Board, and We Welcome Your Participation. The Board Will Listen and Will Not Interrupt Unless the Person Addressing the Board Infinges on the Guidelines As Stated Previously Or Exceeds the Time Limit Authorized for the Presentation. In This Case, Each of You Will Have Three Minutes to Present. Mr. Sheffer Will Keep Time Which Will Be Displayed on the Monitors. According to Law, The Board May Not Take Action on Any Item That is Not on the Agenda. The Board Will Not Debate Nor Respond to Any Question During the Meeting In Order to Research the Question Thoroughly Before Replying. The Board Will Seriously Consider the Matter Brought to Its Attention and Respond Appropriately. Also, According to Law, It Is a Criminal Offense for a Person to Obstruct, Prevent, Interfere With, or Disrupt a Lawfully Called Meeting Through Physical Action or Verbal Utterance. Citizens Are Requested to Supplement any Oral Address to the Board With a Written Summary of Their Presentation and Any Recommendations They May Wish to Suggest. Thank You for Your Concern Regarding Our School District, and The Board Will Hear You Now."
As a Newhouse, I can also add, Spring Independent School District Board of Trustees, I know everyone very well. I'm here tonight just to talk about serving leadership and what serving leadership really means. This month has been designated as Board Appreciation Month, but I think this board needs to be appreciated all year long. I'm not cynical, I'm a past board member, but I watch this board do things every day for the good of our children. For this past year, great achievements as receiving accountability or berating. After that, the task force to give a bond pass, and I admit this was at this time period, and there's time cycle and pass the bond. Serving leadership, public leadership, serving leaders. You do it because you love doing it. I know I'm well aware you get paid for your time and energy. We do it day after day after day. Today, in my little one minute, we'll sit down a second. I want to tell you that on behalf of myself and everyone that's associated with me, we appreciate you. We appreciate each one of you. Happy Board Appreciation. God bless you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker tonight is Cabretha Thomas. And if you will give Mr. Sheffer just a moment to reset that timer. Thank you. You may begin when you're ready.
Happy Appreciation Month, Dr. Anahosa, Board Members and Trustees. In October of 2022, you made a lot of staff members happy because you had previously said yes to individual teacher performances, campus rating awards, and things of that nature. And I stand before you because you didn't have a "let me tell you how much I appreciate this" button. And so I stand before you to tell you that I've talked to a lot of people around the district to say, "Hey, what did you do with that extra money that you received?" And that money actually changed a lot of lives because people were able to actually take vacations, set money aside for a rainy day, not just a little drizzle, but a real rain if it came, pay off bills, able to enjoy Christmas, pay off their car notes. And my favorite is no longer have more month than they had money. And so we know that the system was not perfect because, again, people utilized another budget. But you just, I just want to say that on behalf of a lot of staff members that I spoke to, thank you for your yes.
Thank you.
We have no additional speakers tonight, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Binkley. For our next item, I'd like to recognize... Before we move on to that item, I do have... For item 10 this evening, in Spring ISD, we value diversity, and we treat everyone with dignity and respect. Equity is the underlying, uniting thread, united thread woven through all the work that we do. And we have asked the administration to take a deeper dive and a deeper look into the proposal in Items 10 Agenda tonight, and to bring that back to the board at a future date. So if there aren't any objections or if there's any discussion from the board, I'd like to hear that now. Otherwise, we will table that to another time. All right, thank you. With that, we will now move on to our next agenda item, and I'd like to recognize our Chief of Innovation, Dr. Matt Marison.
Thank you, President Durant. This item can be found on page 17. Last Thursday, Dr. Eric Tingle, our Director of Strategic Innovation, came and presented the work of our ACE Committee in crafting and developing the calendar for 2324. We have with us today three of our ACE Committee members who worked and served not only on the ACE Committee, but also on the ACE Calendar Subcommittee, and put in many, many hours as they went back and forth adjusting to the feedback from their, from district staff, parents, as well as the community. And so we did want to recognize them today. So, Dr. Tingle, if you and our ACE Committee members could stand to be recognized, please. And their work was widely received. I will say, we had one of the highest response rates that I think we've ever seen, with over 7,543 individual responses. And 61% of those were from our community, over 4,600. And that included our parents, our students, and community members. And additionally, for this year, we, in the past, some of the results have been pretty close. And additionally, for this year, we, in the past, some of the results have been pretty close. And this year, it was very clear that the calendar that they developed, Calendar A, which was very innovative compared to what we have done in the past and includes an additional break in the fall, more time for teacher work and professional development, was the overall choice from all the respondents with 72% of them choosing Option A over Option B, which has been more of our traditional calendar. It is our administrative recommendation that the Board adopt Option A.
Thank you. I'll now entertain a motion that the Board of Trustees approve the 2023-2024 Instructional Calendar Option A.
Madam President, I move that the Board of Trustees approve the 2023-2024 Instructional Calendar Option A.
I second that motion.
It's been moved by Trustee Adams and seconded by Trustee Newhouse that the Board of Trustees approve the 2023-2024 Instructional Calendar Option A. Is there any discussion?
I just wanted to bring up that Dr. Inahosa described a balancing act we're going on in the calendar that we do put extra minutes in every day, but we don't want to put in so many minutes that we exhaust the teachers, the students. And so we're just in that area where a few minutes a day adds up so that if we have a weather day, we don't have to extend the school year. So I just think that Option A is just a great compromise.
I wanted to thank the Superintendent for being responsive to my concerns about membership on the ACE Committee. I did go look at the website and see that that had been adjusted so that members of our community who are not employees of the school district know the pathway to joining the ACE Committee. And we believe that that input from our community, our parents, our non-parent members, our community partners is very important. So thank you for being so responsive.
And Dr. Parisone, thank the ACE Committee, but I'd also like to extend a great big thank you from the Board. As Dr. Jensen indicated, it's the balancing act, and it takes a lot of work to bring forth two options that can meet the needs of everyone, parents, students, staff, community, as well as to collaborate and sort of coordinate with our surrounding districts so that we can have parity. And so we understand that that takes a lot, and we really appreciate you guys. Not hearing any other comment, I'll go ahead and call for the vote. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That motion carries unanimously, including the ACE Committee and the audience. Our next item is the Board Committee Reports. And so I will start with the Audit Committee. The Audit Committee actually met yesterday. And the district's internal auditor, Patricia Reals, has done a great job in making sure that we have completed all of the items on our audit calendar. We are on time, on schedule, and doing well. So that's our update for you. There will be a survey coming out soon to all of the different departments and the Board as well as we develop our calendar for the next school year. So when you receive that survey, please be sure to fill that out expeditiously. And our next committee is the Board Governance Committee, and I'll recognize Dr. Jensen.
We, as a team of eight, voted on a preliminary advocacy agenda for Spring ISD. This is the first iteration. This is going to change. It's going to evolve. Because once the legislature starts having laws introduced, we may have some very urgent new concerns come up. But at this point, I'm just going to read them off, and we'll be posting these with descriptions more fully explaining each of these issues that the team of eight is most concerned about. Number one, teacher recruitment and retention. And this is an advocacy issue because we really do need State of Texas to partner with us to alleviate this problem and attract more teachers to our public education. Number two is vouchers, and we combine that with charter schools. There are some efforts afoot right now to use public funds, taxpayer funds, to support organizations where their board may live out a state and is not elected locally. We, as a Board, are at, we represent our community. You elect us. And we then are trying to spend money the way you want us to spend it. And that does not occur in charter schools. And there's all kinds of little tricky ways that people think up other things, that they don't call them vouchers, they're going to call them tax credits and all kinds of things that we're concerned about. The third one is state accountability. That we really, we want to do well, and we are not afraid to be graded. But we need to be, make sure that that grading is fair and represents the kind of learning and the kind of outcomes we really want for students. I jokingly added to our portrait of a graduate that they also need to be able to take tests really well. I don't want to add that to the portrait of the graduate, let me tell you. But it seems to be that State of Texas puts an undue emphasis and a lot of our grading of our district on how kids take a certain test that really may not represent even the course that they've taken. All right, another one for is school facilities. As Chief Miranda reminds us, school facilities are the second largest capital expenditure in the United States. The first one is highways. And highways are supported by both tech, state, and federal funds, but not school buildings. Those really, that's a burden that local taxpayers really, really are footing the bill. We don't get the extra help. And we think that the State of Texas, especially with their billions, is it almost 200 billion? It's 170 billion excess money they have. And they're talking about helping people have lower property taxes. Well, one great way to do that is to help fund the building of safe, effective school buildings. All right, the next one I'd like to go over is public school finance. It's, talk about compromise. They've been working on this for years and made some good progress sometimes. But we, there are still inequities built into the public school finance that need to be addressed. Number six, governance. We call upon the Texas Legislature to recognize and preserve the right of public school boards to associate, collaborate with each other. I mean, that we are elected officials, and we should have the right to collaborate with each other just as the legislature can collaborate with other elected officials. That is going to wind it up for, except for one other thing. And that is, we really are working on how to effectively advocate for the things we're identifying as big problems that the State of Texas or federal government can help us with. And this is where I'd like to bring in Trustee Natasha McDaniel. She left me some notes that I am going to share. She has already contacted a regional director for Raise Your Hand Texas to support school district advocacy plans. She's already made a move to get an organization that will help us form our advocacy plans. Also, I understand Trustee Correa and McDaniel are both contacting trustees in other districts because these aren't problems or concerns of just Spring ISD. It's concerns of other districts. Ms. Correa, Trustee Correa, would you like to address any of this?
Sure. She, yeah, she left me a note, said that you were going to do an update for us quickly. Yeah, just one of the things that we're thinking about doing is finding ways to collaborate with our neighboring district boards because we share some of the same issues, especially the boards that are touching the borders of our district in particular. And so historically, boards have kind of just been an island to themselves. And we're in a situation in times now where we really need to start learning to work together and figure out solutions to some of these common problems and try to find, I don't want to say safety in numbers, but power in numbers. We need a larger voice. So that's, this is the beginnings of that.
The Board here is going to be going through a couple of conferences where we are going to be working on advocacy issues. And we're going to try to partner with people statewide and nationally. But I would like to encourage everybody who's listening, everybody who's here, that you can advocate to do the same thing we're doing. In fact, we're going to send out a newsletter where you can look up who represents you. And whether you agree with us or not, you get to give them your voice and what you think about this. I know in Spring ISD, I'm very proud of how we are good stewards of our taxpayer money. And we have reduced the tax rate year after year after year. And even with the bond, it's just the tax rate we had a year ago, as I understand it, Chief Westbrook's. And so I'm very proud of what we've done with, to be respectful of, I mean, I pay tax, school taxes too, and I don't want somebody frittering them away. I want them used for what they're intended, and that's the good education of our kids. And that's it. President Durant.
Thank you, Trustee Jensen. And I just want to say to the community, I'm so proud to be a part of this Board because we have been elected to represent you, and we don't just do it right here. I want to thank Trustee Correa for leading the charge in partnership with Trustee McDaniel's to start to engage our neighboring school board members in working with Raise Your Hand Texas to be able to collaborate together and approach our legislators as a united and as a united front with common goals to support and make sure that we have what we need to educate our children. And their strength in numbers. And we're hoping to be able to make a mark and a difference, and we'll keep you posted. And I also want to thank Dr. Inahosa and the administration for supporting us in this effort.
I wanted to add something really quick. I just wanted to also encourage the advocacy piece. I've spoken with representatives and lobbyists, and they all have said the same thing, that individuals, the citizens, the constituents of a district hold way more power and way more sway than any other politician, any other representative, because it's your votes that are keeping them in office. So it can just be as simple as making a phone call, leaving a message and saying, this is what I'm voting for, this is what I don't like, and that's it. You don't have to even go to the Capitol. It's literally just as simple as that, and they will listen to that. So I just wanted to encourage you to participate any way that you can.
The power is in your hands. Thank you. I'd like to now recognize Trustee Adams, who chairs our Equity Committee.
Thank you, Madam President. So work in the Equity Committee continues apace. The equity work is complex, and we're dealing with how we prioritize funding and the distribution of resources and how we serve each and every child in the district, meet the needs of our faculty and staff and teachers and employees. And so we have a work schedule that we're on, but we really don't move forward the way you would think if you're a teacher thinking in terms of scope and sequence. We're getting the work done. And so what has been happening is, is we do do the professional development. We attend the conferences. Good ideas keep coming back from those conferences. So on this conference coming up where we're doing the advocacy, there's also an Equity Symposium happening where I'm expecting to get lots of good ideas and network with people who are doing this work all over the country. And so that's where we are now. We're looking at different types of budgeting options as our budget process comes forward. We'll be looking at things through a more refined equity lens than when we first started this work. And so I'm looking forward to doing that. And also, Trustee Correa, if you wanted to chime anything in?
I think you covered it well, because we've had some conversations. You know, we want to be good stewards of, good stewards of our time and, and the efforts that we put in. And to Trustee Adams' point, sometimes it seems like we might get derailed on our, on our list. But at the end of the day, it's all coming back to equitable outcomes for our students. So I definitely look forward to continuing the work and going down our path.
That's all from Equity.
Thank you. Our next committee is our Board Community Engagement Committee, and I now like to recognize Trustee Hodges.
Thank you, Madam President. Good evening, everyone, again. The Community Engagement Committee, our goal is to partner with the district and key stakeholders to develop and implement opportunities to improve communications and awareness between the district parents and the community. We have not met yet this new year, but we will continue, as we started last year, in partnering with our community engagement, family engagement under Ms. Carol and working with them to bring some programs back to the district and then also implementing some new programs. We plan to start our Bridging the Gap series, and I believe the first one will focus on school safety. So we'll be planning that as well. And then we will also continue and just work really closely with that department. We don't want to reinvent the wheel. We just want to help it, you know, turn a little bit better. And we definitely want to increase our community engagement. I think we've done a great job. I've seen some improvement, and you've all seen the improvement in just the data with even, you know, the calendar in getting that out into the community and the responsiveness from the community. So we know that the things that we've started and the things that we'll continue to do are actually working. So it's baby steps, but there are some gigantic baby steps. And so we're proud of the work that's being done. Also, we're going to start recognizing our standing community partners that we work with. Very excited about that. And then I believe we have a couple of other programs. I'm not sure if we're going to announce those yet, but we, you, there's more to come as far as what we'll do from a community engagement aspect. So again, we encourage you to continue to participate. Definitely utilize our website. The communications team works very hard to keep that up to date for us. And any information that you need, follow us on social media. And just continue to be engaged because we definitely need you. We can't do this work without you. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Hodges. Our next item this evening is our Consent Agenda. And so I'll now entertain a motion to approve and adopt all of the items listed on tonight's Consent Agenda.
Madam President, I move that the Board of Trustees approve and adopt all of the items listed on the Consent Agenda.
Second.
It's been moved by Trustee Correa and seconded by Trustee Hodges that the Board of Trustees approve and adopt all of the items listed on tonight's Consent Agenda. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. That motion carries unanimously. Thank you. And so the Board of Trustees will now recess this open session and convene in a closed meeting in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Section 551.071, 551.072, 551.074, 551.076. Yes. And 551.081. No voting will take place in the closed meeting. Any action the Board wishes to take as a result of the discussion in the closed meeting will take place after the Board reconvenes an open session. And the time is now 8:31 PM. Because I didn't want to press the backup on us again. We will now reconvene and resume the regular Board meeting of the Board of Trustees. The time is now 9:04 PM. We will now address... We will now address the items discussed in the closed session. Are there any motions?
Madam President, we have no motions. I move that we adjourn the Spring ISD Board of Trustee meeting.
Have a second?
I second that.
It's been moved by Trustee Hodges and seconded by Trustee Newhouse that we adjourn tonight's meeting. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. The motion carries unanimously. We adjourn tonight's meeting at 9:05 PM.